Thank you.
I'll make a motion to open the board.
Aiden seconded in the discussion, all in favor?
Four zero.
With the permission of the select board, we might move some things around, change the order a little bit. I'm told that the first item on the old business trust policies, the representative from Marhaver Trust can't be here, he should be here next meeting. So we'll table that, we'll take a motion to table that.
It'll be it.
Aiden, made in seconded, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Anybody here about the newsletter? With the select one's position, permission, we'll take that item first.
It'll be it.
All right. All right. I'm not quite sure where to start. Do you have something to say, Barbara?
Yep. I'm Barbara Allen, and on February 23rd, I sent an email to Mike Garrett expressing my concern about the fact that a member of the select board used the Town Newsletter to express his own opinion about an article that is on the ballot for March 17th. And I may have been mistaken, but I've always assumed that the Town Newsletter is a place for information, not a place for opinion. If it is going to be a place for opinion, I think that needs to be discussed, and I think it needs to be, if someone is going to present an opinion on one side of an issue, then someone needs to present the other side of the issue, in fairness to the voters. So I can read the entire email that I sent to you, Mike, I know the select board and the town manager have seen it, but...
I don't think there's any to, we've all read it.
They've all read it, I don't need, you don't need to, Barbara, we'll enter a copy in the record if you like.
Okay. But I just, I found, I've been a taxpayer and a voter since 1989 in the town of Belgrade, and I've just found this extremely offensive, that somebody from the select board would use the newsletter to put forward his own personal opinion, to try to sway the voters to a particular side of the issue.
Thank you, thank you. I might, as a matter of information, indicate that the select board is going to promulgate a policy on the newsletter, what goes in it, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, who can have things in the journal to begin with, and that'll probably be discussed next meeting, if it's ready in time. Okay?
I guess so. This is news to me, but, you know, this is what I don't like. Why are we just, ah, never mind, I'll express it later.
I apologize, because I thought everybody was aware of that.
No.
Okay. Anyway, that's the plan, anyway. Ernie?
I just would, I would just like to address the concerns, which are absolutely one hundred percent right. And basically, I'm gonna just read this off, so I don't, so I say it in the right manner. But, "There is an issue with the article I submitted in the Town Newsletter. It has been brought to the board's attention that when I advocated voting a certain way, it is not allowed. At this point, I wish to apologize to the select board and to the citizens of Belgrade for this error. Since I have already made this error, I have an obligation to pay the cost to the town that was incurred in this newsletter." So, if that apology is acceptable, which I really, I wasn't aware, and I was put on short notice, it was mentioned that the letter was going out, and I thought it was a good opportunity to share that information. And the information could be shared, but advocating for something is not allowed. So, I apologize, and the bill, basically, based on what the town manager had drawn up was $60.06. So, at this point, unless somebody wants to continue on with the conversation...
I'm just wondering, who's going to see that letter, your letter of apology?
Everybody can see it.
But I mean, is it gonna be sent around to the citizens of the town, or is it gonna be included in another newsletter, or is it just gonna be part of the record of this?
I don't think that we'd thought about that, Barbara, it'll be part of the record, as is all the things that we do, you can have a, I'm sure if Ernie doesn't mind, you can have a copy of it, but I don't think...
No, this public information, it's part of the meeting tonight, and I wrote this up just so that I can say it in the right manner. I didn't want to speak and get off track, you know, because I didn't know what the, what, even if it was being acceptable, but all I can say is, it was not done with the knowledge that it was not appropriate, but it was definitely, since then, there's been information shared with me, what is appropriate, what isn't appropriate, and obviously, that was not appropriate, and, and in the part that was really not appropriate, at Article 9, asking to raise $40,000 to be voted down, to send a clear message that fundraising by non-chairable organizations through petition and taxation is not acceptable, that is advocating something, and that should not have been in there. And I apologize for that.
And are you the editor of the newsletter?
I have nothing to do with the newsletter, I just submitted my article, and the town office takes care of that, so I didn't edit anything off, what I submitted in the newsletter, I submitted, and it went in, and then the news came that...
So someone in the town office authorized that it be printed in the newsletter in that form?
Yeah, it goes...
We had no policy.
No.
There is no policy, you can write a letter and have it put it in there. Now, our goal is to get a policy.
Right.
That says what can go in there and what can't, and we intend to do that.
Okay.
That will be taken care of, and to correct the situation, because since I did advocate for something, I need to pay for it, so, I'll make that motion that I pay for the, my, what is obligated, but part of the newsletter. I guess somebody...
Aiden seconded.
I'll make a motion that I, that I am billed, Ernest Price has billed $60.06 for the article in the Town Newsletter.
Second.
Aiden seconded, any other discussion, all in favor?
I think you got a question, will we get, will we mind?
Go ahead.
So if I decided to write an article to the Town Newsletter, and it came back on me, I would be responsible for backpaying, or possibly redistributing, an apology, a letter of apology or appeal?
It depends what the policy says, whether you'll be able to put something in the newsletter. Okay?
Right, but there is no policy now, so why would anyone be responsible to read that?
Ernie, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to answer that. First off, if it's inappropriate to use taxpayers' dollars, which has been brought to my attention to advocate something, I'm using taxpayers' dollars to do that, I didn't know that it was inappropriate, I didn't realize, so I did it. So I did it, and so I've used taxpayers' dollars, and I just will sleep better at night knowing that I've given the money back to the taxpayers.
I guess I'm not able to reconcile that, for some reason. Well, I don't want to spend a lot of time, it's been done, Ernie has attempted to make it right, he's apologized, he's offering to pay the cost as determined by the town manager, and that's enough. Okay? We can talk afterwards, I don't want to be here all night, just arguing over the...
Call for the question.
Call for the question, okay, all is in favor? What?
No, no, I'm gonna vote against it.
Against?
Ernie having to pay for it, I think...
No, it's a voluntary thing, though.
That's right.
Okay.
I appreciate your support.
Well, first of all, don't, before we get too far into this, doesn't the businesses pay for this? There are ads at us, so actually, how many dollars come out of taxpayers' money?
I subtracted the advertising revenues.
Okay, I'll go along with it, then. I thought I had a case, never mind.
All in favor of the article?
I'll vote aye.
Four zero. Thank you, thank you, Ernie. Thank you all. Yes, Barbara?
Just one more thing, if there is going to be any opportunity for residents to be involved in establishing the policies, and some of the people who raised the issue, I would be willing to serve on a committee or whatever is gonna try to establish a policy.
Well, you're free, you're free to come, when the meeting where we discuss the policy, you're free to come and have your input, okay? Policies like this are promulgated by, and by the selectmen, it's our policy, actually, and this one, I don't expect will be a very complicated one, but if you want to come, we'll announce when it is, keep in contact with the town manager, she'll tell you which agenda it's on, feel free to come.
I think we ought to make a note that she'd be contacted, when that's gonna be on the agenda, to go over the final draft, what is being proposed, because we have a lot of data now as to how it should be structured, why it should be structured that way, so we have a lot of knowledge that we didn't have in the past, so if we have a policy in place, the policy is something that we will have to follow.
We'll contact you, Barbara, in a minute. Anything else on that item? Moving along. We'll go back to the order, new business Hammond-Limba Company, personal property abatement, taxpayer.
We have a personal property tax abatement for Hammond-Limba, this is for the taxable portion of the account, that is a corrective action from last year. And it was for $1,227.08.
Was that an over assessment, or? Go ahead.
I think we should approve it, but first, I'd just like to say, normally, we get an explanation with, from the assessor, I know this is a new setup now, but normally, we have that, and plus, I think the, I think, maybe the wording should approve by the board of select person, since we're not the assessors anymore, I think we are just the select board.
Well, he's the assessing agent, you guys are still...
They're still the assessors.
Yeah, all right, that's funny, yeah. This is different than what it's laid out.
Ernie is right, usually, they give us a note, at least, to say this is the reason for the...
A reasoning.
Yeah.
I'm sure this is fine, but I guess, on being on the board over the years, I've always felt better when the assessor has given us his reasoning, or her reasoning, I think that's all.
I make a motion to accept it.
And second.
Aiden seconded, heard the discussion, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
I actually also have another one that came today, Rob was here today, and was straightening out another issue from prior years, what happened was, the property was actually taxed twice, it was split and sold, and it wasn't corrected in the Trio database, so it was billed twice, and this is an abatement to Clifton and Bergen-Hammond for map seven law 25C in the amount of $266.
This is a personal one, it's not the company?
No, this is a contract.
I think we ought to put that on next, the next time it's not on part of the agenda.
Okay.
That would be my...
Okay. Foreclosed, we want to skip, I'm gonna skip down to D, to the foreclosed article.
Yeah, the, according to your policy, the property owner had until the beginning of your business meeting tonight to come in and pay the arrears, and it didn't happen, so that was just an update on that.
So we have to take an action to port to, we don't have to do anything, just let us, anybody want to discuss it, questions?
No, the only thing was, the other letter we got from the sister, and I'd asked for legal opinion, and we got one back, and we're doing the right thing, and I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
It's one of those, when is that actually?
The bids are due March 16th, so you can move on them at your next meeting, if you so choose.
I feel sorry about it, but, you know, we gotta do what's right.
I ran out without a copy of the agenda of the... All right. You want to do, finish it out, or go to the town meeting preparation now? I'm just thinking, that might take a little while.
That's fine, I don't think it's gonna take so long, you think?
All right.
Because all he's gonna do is find out who's gonna speak, and help stuff, and...
Okay.
I did.
I cannot without my... I got borrowed. All right. Mr. Ray?
It's in the book, too.
Is it?
It's always in the back of the book, it's probably easy to find, it's right wing in the back. This one isn't mine.
Not mine. Jay, you wanna come up and...
Yeah.
He's there. Oh, God, there's Alex I was looking at.
We're ready.
I don't have one in my book.
Do you want mine?
Take this. All right, never mind. Never mind, I didn't say it. All right, how about, how do we start this? Go item by item?
No, what we usually do is, we need to sort of go through the checklist of items, first of all, to help me understand, are there any, other than Carrie, are there other folks that are not residents that are likely to speak at the town meeting?
I love, Foskett.
I have Gary, Kenny from transportation, we have Dan from Belgrade, those are still, are there awards that are gonna be given out?
Yes.
Who's gonna do those?
I guess I'm a good... What? You're not getting one, so don't laugh.
Then we could just go through the articles, just sort of make notes of who's gonna be on tap if there are questions about them, and if there are, if you know of articles where somebody's going to make a presentation, it would be helpful, to know that ahead of time, so that, the order of business would be to put the article on the floor, it would be seconded, and then if there's somebody that's going to make a presentation, they would do that before we reveal that for discussion, so as we go through this, if you know somebody that's planning to do something like that...
Just add an article 12.
I just make a note that I believe Carrie's gonna have a thing running.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have a PowerPoint for the people that are visual.
An explanation of the budget system, right?
So that'll be running along...
So that'll just show, that'll be projected to a screen.
Right.
That the folks can see, you know, they're making a presentation.
Only if asked, right?
As the article comes up, it'll be there, and if there's questions, people can...
You know, similar to what was in the newsletter, I'll have the statistics all day, and you can only put so many words on a PowerPoint, and it may be the best we can get, so...
Article 12 is the first one, Jay.
That's pretty much a no-brainer. Yeah, yeah, I'll take care of that one, but, no.
It's a no-brainer.
Well, it's just, it's basic.
I just didn't want to say pitch.
Yeah. Thirteen.
So, is that gonna be Carrie? Who's gonna take it seriously? Who's gonna... So I guess it wasn't a no-brainer.
Well, we said the, it probably should be you.
When you, when they ask who's gonna tell you, you mean who's gonna move it?
No, 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 it doesn't, what I'm looking for is, if there's a question that comes up, who is the person that will be well-versed on the question and able to answer, just so that somebody's prepared, and we don't...
Should be the treasurer.
...shuffle around. All right? Thirteen?
Town manager?
That'll be the treasurer.
Fourteen?
I'm probably gonna, somebody's gonna ask the question, who voted against it, and it was me, so... But, I may not have to speak against it, we'll see what happens.
So you're gonna feel that one, Ray?
No, you guys gotta feel it, I'm just voting against it, and somebody's gonna ask why, and I'll state my case.
You're talking about fourteen?
Yes.
Which is the biggie, is all the administrative...
That should be treasurer, too, though?
You can't get a hold of that thing.
Fifteen. This would be the town manager. Manager fifteen?
Danny, Danny. Fire chief. On his part of it.
And then maybe sixteen as well.
Yep.
Seventeen, also Dan?
Yes.
Eighteen?
Actually, just, heads up, Jay, on seventeen, that's the one that we're going to have to take no action on, that's the one that asks for the $20,000 carryover, Dan, remember we talked about that? Because last year's town meeting warrant specified that any leftover funds be used to pay additional principal on the fire truck loan, which is what we had done, because that's what we were ordered to do, so there is no carryover money.
Eighteen.
Wait a second, so, it authorized the following account to be carried forward, so there is, so this article, I'm confused about what you just said, in terms of, just this article. So there's no money carried forward?
Correct.
So this article should be turned down, and then, and Dave will explain that?
It should be, it should be turned down, and we can't put a new article in on the floor, right?
No.
So it's all, it's just gonna be squashed?
Well, I mean, Dan can speak, I mean, it'll be, it'll be moved and seconded, that is printed, but since there's no money to be carried forward, I guess it's...
What we're looking for is a down vote, am I correct on that?
Some, well, that's...
People who voted down, yeah.
Was this the money for the poll bond?
Yeah.
And it wasn't?
Why would there be a vote if it's an invalid article?
I don't know, it's printed.
You have to vote on it.
Wouldn't we just, wouldn't Dan just adjust, make a motion to make it a zero dollars, and then vote on it? If there's no dollars, then...
Good time to take a coffee break.
You could do that, I mean, I think it will probably take more time to explain, Barbara, we're gonna skip over it, than taking action on it, and I think that if the fire chief stands up and makes a, clarifies this article, and makes the recommendation that it be turned down, I suspect it would proceed fairly efficient, makes sense.
Okay. Nineteen.
The Morris, wasn't it?
Did we do eighteen? No, eighteen, we didn't do eighteen, that's Dan. Nineteen. Is that...
This is Morris, yeah, so Morris is a part of it. Cemeteries, is that Gary?
Anyone miss Gary?
Twenty-two?
Gary.
We aren't, aren't we funny?
Twenty-two.
Is that the town?
No, I was just trying, I was just trying to comment, I'm wondering if anybody's gonna ask whether there's no money to be taken out of the trust fund, just to offset some of this, as a traditionally has been.
That was gonna be amended on the floor.
That is not gonna be, yes.
Yeah. Phil, did you post this?
That's what I'm asking, who's gonna do that? You know, and how much?
I think the chairman of the, of the cemetery.
I don't know, you don't know.
Okay, how much, how much we're gonna ask for? Do we determine that?
Well, we have to know.
Yeah, why don't you come see us, and we'll give you the, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I have it down, it's available, so...
Article 21 takes some already.
Yeah.
So Phil is gonna do twenty-one.
We're doing it on the clock, Dan.
Phil, ready?
Take us to twenty-three.
Yep.
That's Gary.
Yep.
Twenty-four.
That's also Gary.
That is Gary.
Okay. Twenty-four?
Yep.
Twenty-five?
That's Gary.
That's Gary.
So I have a question on this one, and that has to, following up on a conversation I've had with a couple, in 2004, there was a petition that expenditures for the Center for All Seasons in the library would be handled on a secret ballot, and these, and in years past, that's been broken out, they were combined there, I just want to make sure that folks are aware of that, and I think we ought to seek clarification from MMA on that.
Well, part of it is in the secret ballot.
Well, the part of it is, but the library is, but this has to do with facilities, the article in, the petition was that... Shall the budget for the Center for All Seasons be voted on a referendum question, not on the floor of the town meeting? That was adopted in November of 2004, and since that time, the articles so that the Center for All Seasons was separated from the other facilities, with respect to that petition. I appreciate the consolidation, but I think this may be an uncoordinated complication of that consolidation, so I'd just like to make sure that we're handling this right.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Jay, we weren't aware, because it really should be secret ballot, that's what was dictated back then, it still should be.
But it was in a forever article.
It was voted on at a general election, so it's been carried, there were three, there were three articles, three of referendum questions that came up, the brick center was, the Center for All Seasons was one, the donations was the second, and the library was the third. And we've continued that ever since, we didn't distinguish between, it was a one-time or forever, I would suggest that the people who circulated the petition and voted on it, thought that this was not just an annual vote, because it was handled at the general election, the petition was developed in, over the summer of 2004, and was put on the general election ballot in November.
So we should get legal opinion on it, that's what...
If it would help, I'd be happy to just offer comment on that, there is a main and Supreme Court case that says, unless you have a charter provision that locks in on referendum voting, a simple warrant article or a valid question by referendum, but isn't binding on the select board, they still have statutory discretion to decide what to put to referendum vote and what not to, that doesn't mean you can't follow that as guidance and honor the intent of voters, but it wouldn't be illegal to split it out or...
We have a legal opinion.
Great, thank you. Yes, Steph.
Do you have a problem with the raise and/or appropriate, which is in Article 25? Should be either raise and appropriate, or raise or appropriate? To see if the town will raise and/or appropriate?
That may be a type, what do you think?
But is that because you're gonna take money out of the, out of the company, the paper there, no, is that not...
We're gonna resolve the and/or...
No, you're right.
She just raised inappropriate? Or raise or appropriate? Yes?
I know, I think last year, you...
Why don't you come sit up here, Barbara?
Actually, years ago, I think I was the one that maybe drafted that language, because it gives you the option from the floor of deciding, do you want it all to come from taxes, do you want to have a mixture of taxes as funding source, or totally some other funding source, so that was the purpose of the and/or...
Somebody's gonna have to make a motion to the floor.
Somebody that's made a motion, that's right, you can't just approve the article that's presented, that's right.
Okay.
So if we move the second in, somebody's gonna have to make a motion to adjust it, whichever you want to go.
That one be Mike?
To adjust, yeah, okay.
Just take and remove the or...
Twenty-six?
Say jump ahead. What's twenty-seven?
Twenty-six would be Ken.
Kenny? Oh, you'll have to put him down as a, do you put him down as a number?
We'll cover, we'll get the others again. Twenty-seven?
This ought to be, Ken Olson.
Who was twenty-six? Twenty-eight?
Definitely bring it one.
I'm sorry?
I say it's not that involved, I guess, I guess I could do it, if necessary, of course. Okay, it's no-brainer, I ought to qualify for it.
Twenty-nine? General assistance?
Park town manager.
Town manager, yeah.
Thirty? Thirty?
Is, once she gonna be able to be here or not?
I don't know, she'll be here.
Someone will be Valencia or Valencia.
Linda Bacon or Valencia, if they're moving here.
One of the two, I would guess. Who's in charge of the dams now?
Justin Cafferty is the chair of that committee.
So probably he would be the one to speak on that, I would guess.
Who's this?
Doug McCafferty. Doug McCafferty.
Vic Cafferty? I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is he a delivery resident?
Yes, West Ford Camps.
Thirty-two? Adam Morris?
Yeah.
Wait a second.
No, actually, that's the treasurer.
Treasurer.
Melanie also.
Treasurer also.
Thirty-four?
Melanie.
Thirty-five?
I might as well just give it to her.
We're on a roll.
Brian Roll, keep writing Melanie that...
Bring us some throwballs and just... Thirty-six.
Get Carrie to that.
I was going to say, I guess I can handle that one.
Thirty-seven? Pam Prescott.
Pam Prescott, yeah. Next one too, isn't it?
Who's your name?
Pam Prescott. Pam Prescott.
That would be my guess.
If there are questions.
If there are questions, yeah. Thirty-nine?
Valencia or Linda Bacon.
Same for forty-six.
Forty would be Janet.
If we need, if we need it.
Forty-one?
Is that for you, Ryan?
I, I have no address, I have no problems, we all voted to approve that, I can support that.
You're going to take that one? Forty-two?
You want to do that? Forty-two? Carrie will do forty-two. Going back to forty-one, do you want to speak to it if there's a question, you want me to speak to it?
Whatever, whatever anybody's comfortable with, we basically all agree, off of the vote registration, all of them.
But if, if the other one passes, this one will go away?
That's right, it's a contingency article.
That's right.
I'm going to put Ernie down, but I can speak to it.
So if it is...
So do you want to, you want to speak to it, or if there's a question, you'll...
Talking about forty-one?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah, I can speak to it.
But if the other article passes, this one will go away, we won't even...
Correct.
Okay?
Forty-two?
Carrie.
Carrie, there's another one.
Number three. That's pretty much a standard, right?
Yeah, every year.
I can speak to it if necessary. Then we can all go home now. We don't have to have the meeting.
Is there anything else that, I have a role on?
Where are the two, where are the two articles that had to be amended on the floor?
Uh, we have the cemetery and indoor.
And actually, and we'll have to amend, but one of the debt service articles for the fire trucks, because of the twenty thousand dollars carryover.
Yeah, thanks.
Article seventeen?
It'll actually be, it'll be thirty-two, so that'll be Melanie and Dan, we'll have to speak to that one.
You okay with that, Dan?
So there's going to be an amendment for it too?
Yes.
So the amendment is going to come from Dan, not like a speak to it, but the motion and amendment would need to be made by, would need to be made by...
Is that Dan is going to do that?
Yeah.
Which one's that on there?
That's the debt service article for the trucks.
No.
Yeah, I'm going to, I've asked Melanie to call, I'm going to say, Camden, which one? Camden, what? Yeah, on Friday, prior to town meeting, to get the exact payoff amount.
So the amendment will be with regard to the fire department piece?
Correct.
Of the other two?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, somebody that's going to help the PA system and microphones and lights and all that stuff take care of it.
Did Gary talk to you, Jason, about setting that up?
Gary didn't talk to me, yes.
You can do, you can do the sound system again.
I think, yeah, either my person or Percy.
Somebody talk to the voice count?
Uh, Sheriff.
Sheriff, she called me about them. You're a scout. Running out of voice counts, anybody want to join the voice counts? Anything else?
Is there going to be a break, if this thing are a block, if you're trying to get it done?
As you know, because you know I need a break.
Usually the deputy moderator sort of indicates that it's a topic that we're going to, that's what we do.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Jay. Now, we all assuming you're going to be elected, assuming you're going to be elected.
Publicity contest.
For the fourteen guys running against you, you never know, do you?
Borrowing the two million dollars or whatever, whatever we need to borrow.
The ten?
Yeah. Was that it?
Under the debt service, okay, so it's in.
I was trying to look for it, I didn't, long as it's there.
Anything else? Good. All set. I think we do it.
Twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars eighty-one cents.
I make a motion, accept it.
One second.
Any second, any discussion?
I got one question, but I think I've got it answered. On the second page, election system software, is that something we have to get every year?
For the ballots, yeah. The secret ballot, to get that into the machine.
I thought that might be, well, Anthony might have straightened it out before, but I wanted to double check. Thank you.
Good.
Good.
All right, should we vote it?
No.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Town manager?
So I've been told the cost-sharing committee for the RSU is going to reconvene, Dennis has expressed an interest in continuing his work with that committee, so we do need a couple, a couple representatives, so, do you want to get back on it?
Eddie and I will volunteer again.
Okay.
Any, catch them?
Yeah.
No one to jump in the middle of that?
Well, you're welcome, Howard. I'm sure you, it would be, have a good feeling of it. Oh, yeah, you got a good feeling of it.
Institutional memory.
On the same order, the governance committee, the governance meeting is Thursday night, six-thirty, at the middle school, and the select board is invited. All members of the select board are, is, are invited.
Thursday.
Budget committee has always been invited, that too. Yeah, I think anybody that wants to go can go. I'll send, I'll send you the emails, and it's... They're usually on RSVP.
It's a free meal.
It is, it is a meal, yes.
That's why you're going.
No, it's not why I'm going.
They'll be doing this, get that. It might not be, that might be out of town.
All right, well, that's in, that's in the...
Middle school.
Middle school. All right, town manager?
I just have two other quick things, Valencia has asked for permission on April third, which is opening day, at Fenway, if you donate ten dollars to the Jimmy Fund, she was asking for permission to wear Red Sox regalia on that day, and she didn't know if that was something that the board would support for town employees, because it is on a Monday, and it's not jeans, so t-shirt hat.
If they're going to wear their stuff, they're going to, each of them, they're each going to donate ten dollars, or she's just going to donate?
Nothing.
I think it's going for good cause, leave it alone, let it happen. I'll make that motion.
One second, any other discussion? All in favor? Four zero.
Okay, and the last thing I have is...
They're wearing it anyway.
Before we had a chance to draft a letter to DOT, I complained about Route eight and eleven five this year, one of their design engineers happened to come in and register their vehicle that works over there, and she said that, because I asked her about it, and she said there's actually been some issues with the right-of-way process, so it is slated to be done, but unfortunately, it's going to be postponed a year, so it will be done in 2018 because of those right-of-way issues.
It's not a long, it's not a minimum scope, so...
So, do you still want me to send the letter?
I think you still should, I mean, then if people come in and complain to you about it, you can say, we've done this.
Did we ever hear anything back on the letter concerning the... Anything else?
No.
Anything from anybody?
No, I guess not. I'll wait, I'll wait my time.
All right, in that case, I'll maintain a motion to adjourn.
Move with your adjourn?
Don't be it.
Need a second, I don't measure what, discuss it. Thank you, thank you all for coming.